And let the record show, we have Judy and Zach.
Yes ma'am.
First thing?
I know, you and I get our side.
The calendar, approve and file minutes for the regular meeting of January 26th and special meeting February 10th. Have we all seen and approved the minutes?
Yes, they've all been sent out. I got no comments for corrections.
Well, I'd like to make a lot of you-
But I made the correction.
Yeah.
Do we, do we send corrections? Do I send them to you?
You can send them-
If I was a man, I'd send them out on her computer because that's where I draft them. You can just reply to that.
These are terrific things. Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes for regular meeting January 26th and special meeting February 10th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passed. Okay, moving on, treasurer's report.
Okay. Drum roll please. Financial statements for January 2016 were distributed to the board on Friday, February 19th, 2016. January is the month seven of the SMRPD fiscal year, following our highlights of the financial reports. SMRPD profit and loss statement, another significant Orange County tax distribution of 28.2K was received this month. The year-to-date-
Can I ask you a question? How do we get those? Because they don't come in the mail. They're not an electronic funds transfer.
Yeah, well, they go into our account as the county.
Okay, so it is electronic. We never get a check.
No, we never get a check.
Okay.
We have to do a transmittal and get our own check when we do that, which by the way, I think we'll probably do again in June, maybe. You know, we got about, I don't know, 70, I guess, something like 73,000 in the account, so we're, you know, we still got funding there to do it. But we may add another 15 in June. Okay, so distribution 28.2K, the year-to-date income of 73.7K breaks down as follows, 60.3K tax revenue, 4.4K facility rentals and program fees, and $1,000 other revenue. A board decision was made to regularly fund the SMRPD local bank account and eliminate the lengthy paperwork requirements for expense reimbursements by the county. January expenses are higher than normal as current expenses and delayed county reimbursements are both being reflected in these cash basis financials. Monthly expenses should stabilize going forward. Also included in current month expenses is the mid-year insurance prepayment of 3.1K. Year-to-date expenses are 64.6K resulting in year-to-date net income for the first time this fiscal year of 9.2K. Yay! Don't worry, it'll all go away soon.
We have plans for it.
We have plans. SMRPD balance sheet, our cash position is 281.9K, 18 and 1/2K higher than last month reflecting January net income results. All other assets and liabilities remain unchanged from December. SEC profit and loss statement, current month tuition and registration fees are up at 10.4K, the highest since July 2015, and a welcome relief. Revenue trends will continue to be closely monitored. Total revenue for January is 11.4K. The year-to-date income of 72.8K breaks down as follows, 58.7K tuition and other program fees, which represents 80%, and then 20% of our children's center fund, funding comes from donations and fundraisers, that's 11.9K. SEC tuition and program fees are still not covering expenses in any one-month period, although January comes close. The financial health of the children's center continues to rely heavily on donation income. Expenses for the month total 10.5K, as usual, resulting in net income for the first time since January 2015 of .9K. Year-to-date expenses of 72.5K and final results are nearly breakeven with the year-to-date net income of .4K. The SEC balance sheet, SEC's operating cash of 2.9K continues dangerously low, particularly when considering monthly expenses are more than 10K. There again, this is a picture at a particular moment in time, it's more than that now. The cash balance will continue to be closely monitored. Our total cash position is 9.5K, which includes 5K savings earmarked for upcoming prepayment. The change in our month-end cash position from last month is 45K, which reflects the .9K January net income offset by a .4K decrease in accounts receivable. And that's the board.
Still the other night the drop me, but yeah.
And that is that, so I guess I'll make the motion to accept the financials and treasurer's report.
All in favor?
Aye.
The layman's terms, the SEC without the 5,000 set aside for that, maybe we have comments for 4K.
Right at the moment, the balance is-
9,500 about?
Yeah, I was trying to think. I didn't look at it before I came. Debbie, you got it this morning, right? What was it this morning?
Yeah, it was like 9580, I want to say.
I don't remember. It was down, I thought it was down a little bit.
It was up, it was like 10 yesterday, and then something obviously went through, and here's our-
But it's a little, it's a little-
Kid, dad, electric payment.
Yeah, we're all, I think we're all caught up now.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out in the financials here, yeah, we have our high electric payment, but not for the children's center though. And then, this money in here for Steve, the 4,151, is primarily for the floor, right?
Uh, well, I'd have to go back to the-
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the floor, the floor was coughing there. And Steve's doing a lot, overall.
Do you know how much we paid together, Steve?
I don't have it right in front of me.
Well, you know, what the board, but you have to-
Oh, yeah, they do. So are they both listed on the paper or?
He's probably, he's probably on it. You looking on the key now?
Yeah. Lunch bag?
Well, the Steve's- The other Steve's probably in the janitorial.
Okay.
Steve and twice for once for-
Yeah, Steve twice if it was Steve. Why do he want to be janitorial?
And then the senior, the line goes, determine how the-
He can always look on the key now. I can't be talking to anybody on the key now.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on, office five, other district business. The act item, the SMRPD van. Oh, okay. Act item, we have a presentation for Judy.
Yes.
We have a presentation for Judy.
Yes. So I would like to present Judy Myers with a special gift, and it's just, there are so many people in this canyon who are like rocks within the canyon, and you, of course, are one of them. And we don't extend thanks to each other often enough. So you expressed a desire for something, so we just went ahead and got it, and we just want to thank you for your many, many contributions to keeping this community what it is today.
I hope it's a boat. I was hoping it was a pizza.
A big pizza. So anyway, there you go, Judy. Thank you very much for all of your work for the community.
I really wanted one of those, and they picked one up for me.
Oh, nice. Beautiful.
Now you gotta get everybody one.
This was, I think, right after the fire, that's why Saddleback shows so much snow.
It was.
Because there was no brush up there. Eleanor Reynolds is who she did.
Oh, Eleanor took that? That's beautiful, and she's got all the clouds. Lovely.
I believe she did, she did those two, and then Shay, you did the poppies.
Yeah, those are mine.
And I don't know which, the cactus, I don't know, Eleanor did another one of which one of-
I did, I did all of those on that side of the wall, and this is hers.
Well, they sure did-
The red rocks.
They sure did brighten up the roof. And, you know, I hate to be unaggressive, but I was watching the cactus in the-
You can go home, Judy. Thank you for coming.
We got a TV right back there, we can do a pocket show.
That's true, we can just turn down the-
Take your gift and run.
I know, that's not very nice.
Oh, we've got to frame it.
No, it comes like that.
It's good, it comes like this. But I do thank you all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy.
This beauty, and this is absolutely just beautiful. I think Catherine taught like he tried to do with my own camera and it never been successful so thank you so much.
Have a great night. And good job, Debbie, on getting all those made, they're lovely.
Okay, what's next?
That was the act item for the SMRPD van release policy and waiver.
Yeah, so let me tell you what happened with that. So I, um-
Did they get back to you?
No. Ricky's at a conference, but his secretary said that he was checking his email, but he didn't get back to me, so we'll just put it over to the next meeting. But Betsy went over it, and John went over it, and so there's three documents. There's a request to use the van, there's the, a more complete van policy and transportation, and then there's the release for passengers. And they're different than what we've been using, and I feel more comfortable with these. So, anyway, so we'll have it at the next meeting.
So will the van, are you guys looking at the van? Because somebody just asked me, like, is Vanna for rent? I don't think so, I think it was voted against, so.
It's not in the children's center's best interest for us to do that.
Yeah, it's your, it's our asset and your, you know, tool to use, and we can't afford it not to be there.
Okay.
And, and that was just from the experience we had with the Team Rubicon. And the misuse of the driver being approved or licensed. And all that can be, would have been detrimental to our whole insurance.
Okay.
We just want to avoid that, and people, it's not that we can't use it for, let's say, an RSMRPD sponsored event, a field trip, the seniors going to a museum, or something like that, but as the public come in to rent it, like, you know, it hurts.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just spell people straight out. Not an option.
Okay, so we'll get that done. Okay, number six, we'll get right to the Silver Island Children's Center Oversight Committee. We have act item, a report from Lori Briggs, you want to do the report? Your stellar report?
Our stellar report, well, you know, it's like, the report I'm reporting on is January, and then we had another big jump in February, so between January and February, things have really turned around for us out at the children's center, so things are going very, very well.
Yes, it does, your full-time equivalents seem to be going up, and it's going to look good even next month, and we just keep on going, you know, we'll try to do as much as we can to help.
Thank you.
And with that said, I did bring something, you can have your committee.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's good, because I want everybody to look at it.
Here's a logo.
Does the goat, was a little-
Well, it's a kid.
It's, I get it, I get it, I get it.
And you did, you did ask for a goat.
It's whimsical, because I'm looking for a new logo.
You asked for a-
I did. With a goat in it, like a farm animal. So.
I love the tree, it's good.
And it's vectorized, it can be produced as big as you want it, on a banner, anywhere you want to print it.
Business card.
Anything, anything. It could be used in a banner, it could be used in an ad, it could be used, I could make it a PNG transparent for your website, I could put, you know, JPEG, anything, it could be done anything. I already had, I already had children on there once, but it just gets too busy. And then you're going to have it look muddy when you go small, and that's going to look, you know.
Like, first I was just like, let's do a tree with tires.
And then, do you want rainbow children? You'd all have different colors?
Just like still bits.
Because that's been me today.
Like cookie colors.
Yeah, I like the natural look of it. So thank you.
Since I saw that, I thought, well, that's what we had when I was a kid, tire swing for a tree.
Yeah, and we have a tire swing for a tree.
And it's been there.
Where I grew up, yeah, we did.
Can I, can I report on the Rooster Grant?
Yes, and now we have a, sorry, was that it?
Well, that's it, Carolyn's here, we wanted to talk about tuition increases for fall. I have it kind of on the back notes of my, of my report.
I saw that. Why don't you go through your notes then, and present that?
Well, we, we would like to, because I know this has to be approved and posted in the newspaper, right, for approval, anytime we increase anything, so we're just looking to create a rate for potty training, increasing the registration fee, because we're below everyone else's registration fee, increasing tuition rates, but the big part of this Carolyn was supporting was, we increased tuition rates for families that live outside the canyon, but we keep a canyon rate for canyon residents.
And right now, what's the enrollment, half and half?
We have 10 kids who are canyon children at this time.
And how, what's the total enrollment?
We have 25 kids.
Right, so it's about half.
Then, would this be a known topic amongst the local, non-locals? Would they know what their tuitions are? Would it ever get out? Would that be animosity?
Yeah, I would say, no, I mean, I don't, Carolyn, what do you think on that? I don't think-
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable, because, you know, it would be for people who live within the Parks District, and this is kind of, you know, a local taxpayer benefit, you know, we're paying into it as residents, and so, you know, I think it's totally reasonable to let people from outside the community carry a little bit of more of the financial burden, and that's not a significant, you know, a significant amount.
The other, other question I had here is, an increased registration fee, so it would be $100 per child, then 150 for each sibling?
For two, no, no.
Or 150 for two?
For two.
Okay, I would, I would fix your wording on that.
Okay.
Because it almost looks like 150 for the sibling.
For a child and sibling.
Yeah, so I would just maybe, and then, maybe stretch it out to three.
Yeah, like, three kids, you'd probably make it $200 for the registration fee, yeah. We haven't, we haven't been there yet with three kids.
Yeah, that's probably very rare, just because of the, your age group you're in, and if someone, you know, not baby, you have twins or triplets, or babies one right after the other, but that's the only thing I can see to fix on that.
Okay, so didn't you, one of your drafts say increase to all tuition rates, didn't you say by 5%?
That, that's what I was saying, about 5%, and then Carolyn and I kind of did the numbers, like 5% was-
I, I said that 5% was almost $900, and it would probably be easier for families just to do 900, because that way it's easier to remember your, your payment each month.
To round up.
Yeah, it's like, that's like 5 and 1/2 or so.
Full-time.
Yeah.
Full-time.
Which is still, um-
Amongst other schools in the area?
Yeah, I have this-
Or let's say, in their area.
I just have one copy, this is from what other schools are arguing right now.
And this is, this says for two and then for four? Is that what this is for? It says two and-
Two, two means two-year-olds and four means parents.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, most schools differentiate between the age group. A lot of them don't have a potty training fee, but they have a more expensive cost for, they have a more expensive class for unpotty trained children.
What would the potty training fee be? Is it a one-time charge for that year?
Uh, my thing, uh, in Carolyn's research, we were talking about like $40 extra a month, about $10 a week.
I want to ask about that, because that was a huge issue when we had that before, when Mary was working there. And it was because of not having two people in the classroom, so.
Now we have plenty of staff, and the staff that we have are very efficient at potty training.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would not be an issue?
No, that would be a hard to-
And we, we're maxing it out at six, I mean, we've already got six two-year-olds right now that are in the potty training process, so I'm not, you know, my plan is not necessarily to enroll any more kids who are in diapers.
So then what happens is, let's say, in the middle of the year, within the middle of the month, the child becomes potty trained, and then that fee goes away? Or is it throughout the whole year? Or is it based on being potty trained?
That's be when potty train is over.
Yeah, when they're, once they're in underwear and minimal accidents.
No reading doing this, you're just not getting-
Exactly, we're just not charging extra for-
Extra compensation for all the time it takes.
Yeah, and it's very time-consuming, I mean, it takes up most of Heather's day, is spent just on being-
Well, you give incentive for the parents to spend some more time on potty training also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that would be a non-reasonable.
So then what you need to do is, for next month, you need to have a full schedule, all written up.
Okay.
With what all the rates will be, the current ones, and-
What we're, what we're proposing, right, okay.
And we need to, I think, um, get an approval from Betsy Martin on having a differential tuition rate for out of our jurisdiction.
Have it written up, and then John will give it to our council.
Okay.
With any corrections that Debbie might see, or we might see, and then we'll go back forth once, and then John will just run with it.
Yeah, so she needs to get it to you before the next meeting.
If there is going to be a differential, I think we need to get that-
I'll work on it next week.
-through our staff council.
And send it to you.
We'll be gone next week.
Oh, okay. I'll send it to you. Okay.
All right, perfect. Yeah, just clarify, increase your tuition, go on higher per, and then 150 for two, 200 for three. Well, 175 for three, I don't know, since they're there, it might, that might be a way to go.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's currently no separate pricing for canyon residents, but we'll be creating some. Yeah, and I think it is a good idea.
Which, I think it's totally reasonable. Like, Carolyn was saying, you know, people are paying property taxes to live here, so you're kind of already paying into the-
Max, no begging.
The children's center, so.
Well, big time, there's a $130,000 deficit that could have gone for other things, supporting the children's center, so the community here gets less recreational benefits because of the children's center. So hopefully in the future, that won't be the case.
Yeah.
And there's, right now, 11, 10 equivalent?
11, 13.71.
13.71?
Yeah.
Did our, did our equivalent need go up? Remember, it used to be 12? Is it still 12? I don't know, we can't-
We've never changed it from the plan, but that was always just a place to break even number.
That was a place to break even when there was-
So, obviously, she was looking at 25.
And now we're going to have higher expenses, so we're going to have to see how it goes.
Well, here's the deal, we were 100, I think, $100 short of paying our expenses with tuition last month, and we had 11 have to eat. So the projections that we needed 12, seems like it's really right on the mark.
They're almost there.
And it might fluctuate with the increase if it gets approved with the non-locals, and that could help with that, but also just keep up the good work, go on, you know, if we can keep increasing.
The word is out about the school, and it's spreading, like, I just had a guy come from China, and he heard about us in China.
They got a lot of children there.
They have, well, they, we could partner up with them, because what they're looking at is-
They're not watching their kids.
They saw our program somehow, and he came and met with me like two weeks ago and said, I have like five of these families in China, they want to send their kids here for two months over the summer to be immersed in, you know, American culture and learn English and all that, and, you know, our children don't really have experiences like this in nature, we're looking for something like that, this could be a real benefit for you, because, you know, these are, you know, families-
The summer program.
He said, these are affluent families, yeah, for summer, they sent him for two months.
So Lori, maybe you should approach licensing and get the license for the other module extended to 6 o'clock. You're almost close to done.
Yeah, I'm still waiting on the, on the six-year-old increase to our license too, because, you know, we were requested to be, license up to six-year-old.
I suggest you do those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, so can I report on the Roosters Grant?
Yeah, we'll report on the Rooster Grant.
So I'm happy to announce that the Roosters Grant is done. Lori has $25 to spend on the garden that they're going to install in the back by the older children's playground. So, I prepared a small report for the Roosters Foundation that if someone, it's my only copy, but if you want to come up and look, you can. And so what I said is that during the past year and a half, the Rooster Grant has achieved the following: increase the awareness and appreciation of the environment and nature for 75 young children who attended the school or participated in events; enable the development of a hands-on, environmentally-based learning curriculum that weth nature into reading, writing, spelling, number identification, et cetera; transform the SEC's classrooms through providing environmentally-specific learning materials such as insect viewers, a water table, treehouse fabric, science books, a geos discovery kit, et cetera; more than doubled, SEC's enrollment as more and more parents appreciated the value of a nature-based preschool. And then specifically, the grant provided a week of intensive outdoor education by inside the outdoors, Department of Education's Environmental Science Program, a week of day camp focused on science education at Tucker Wildlife Sanctuary, a nature center operated by California State University, Fullerton, and Majesta, and then six traveling scientist workshops, bro, that was also from inside the outdoors, as SEC. And then I wrote, "SEC's grounds and classrooms were transformed with an abundance of natural materials, science-oriented equipment, colorful art projects based on nature, small animals, and even a small wooden tree. Not a penny of the grant was spent on staff or operating expenses, every cent went to enhance the children's environmentally-based education and for materials necessary for science-oriented learning." So, and then I just pictures of a lot of the things that were purchased with the grant. So we sent this in.
Did the Roosters, did the Roosters request the report, or was this just something you gave to John?
No, it's just something, I, I mean, there might have been, we didn't even really get a standard of one letter, but we got something kind of strange.
That's what I was wondering, because you know, it's weird.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, hopefully stay in their good grace, I think it'd be nice from a letter from you and the kid, and see if we can keep that-
I don't think that's necessary, I don't know.
But it's nice.
I know, but for grant committees, it doesn't, it's not a-
Pictures of little kids?
You can't send pictures of little kids.
Oh. With bars over there?
It does, it does keep with the children's center history, but I was very careful not to have any stuff in the pictures.
I would just try to go with the borrowed interest and, you know. Keep, keep the children's center in the forefront of their giving and their generosity, you know.
Maybe they'll consider it to get in the future.
Rosie, get down.
I, I agree, I don't think that's-
Maybe a letter from you personally, Lori, about, you know, something like that.
For grants to send reports like this, they get letters like that all the time. They don't get reports that have data and facts as to how the grant's spent.
So maybe you go to their office.
How about sending them cookies?
I know.
I like cookies.
Yep, the children's center has typically done what you're saying for many years. So does everybody else. I know, I know. And it just goes right in the trash, because it doesn't mean-
Well, when the time comes, it's a lot of people working, maybe they have an application and keep it.
But the point, listen, you guys, the point is not really that. The point is, is that this money transformed the children's center.
Absolutely.
And the children's center now is very clean.
Yes, the children's center is very clean.
Children's center is so clean.
It doesn't smell anymore. It used to smell all the time.
Oh, that's my turn, I missed it.
Yes, and it looks like a nature preschool. It has been transformed. Once you get a garden in there and you do a little bit more work on the outside, you know, there's like seeds made out of log stumps that Steve brought over there, I mean, visually, it looks very, very good for me.
I've been over there a couple times in the last month or so for this telecon thing, and also looking at the garden, and what could be done there. It just looks a lot better, a lot better, so, good job.
Well, thank you.
Good job, Lori.
And I think all the effort and all the stuff you're doing is probably helping increase your FTE and, and keep up the good work.
Yeah, everybody there is very happy and they're telling all their friends about it, so.
But I don't think we could've done it without the Rooster Grant.
No, that definitely, definitely has added the enrichment.
Okay, so then Crowe about? No, um, all right, did you bring the?
I did.
Okay, um, I think Lori had requested possibly giving the Albertson's credit card back again. And if you, if, if, if we're gonna do that, that's fine, but if we're not gonna do that, I'd like to up the FTE cash. This is pretty high, but I'd like to up this to three hundred, because I just, I just charged, it's Friday, now it needs to be charged again, so this is...
Well, we got into a little bit of trouble with the Albertson's credit card.
Right, now with that said, do you always shop at Albertson's or do you go to the State of Brothers, which might be better?
This week, I, I went to Ralph's, sometimes if I can get someone to take me, I go to Costco or I go to Smart and Vinyl or I go to Trader Joe's.
Okay, I think cash might be the best way to go there. Because you're gonna get more bang for your buck.
I just, I go, now that we have enough staff, every Monday morning, that's what I do, it's my first thing, I go in the store, I get sacks for the week and all our paper products, so. And that's gonna be anywhere from fifty to a hundred dollars a week, so.
All right, well.
Okay, well, then, but make sure you keep it under lock and key. So it's starting to get to be a lot of money now.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I mean, I got my...
But the board doesn't help.
No, they don't.
A Costco card?
No, I probably...
Marcy takes me.
They would try, I don't know what they do, but.
Yeah, we remember that.
I had a membership on.
We don't necessarily wanna have credit cards.
So why don't we pay for Lori to get one, that would save a lot of money.
Yeah, it would be, it would be very beneficial. I mean, right now I rely on Marcy and then each sixty-one days, so, but, you know, then I could go every Monday.
Isn't it sixty dollars?
For the executive membership for a year?
We don't need the executive membership.
Because you get money back when you swing in.
We don't need the executive membership.
But.
I did that, it wasn't worth it.
Yeah, it's never worth it, they're trying to upset.
You did a good calculation at the cash register.
It really is.
I did.
I think that we should just get a Costco card, a regular membership, and then we can reimburse her, is that all right?
No, don't let him feed the dog, he's very allergic to all food.
Is he?
Yes.
All food.
He, his lips will break out at three seconds.
Oh, man, he gets that big old thing on his, ugh, it's bad. He's a puking, uh, diarrhea.
So we're deciding on a costume card?
We don't have to vote on it, he can take it out of there, yeah.
So I have permission to go get a Costco card?
Sounds like me, yep.
Cool.
Give me your receipt, we'll recharge you.
Okay, we wanna vote to increase the FTE cash?
No, I mean, I don't think it's going to necessarily, you know, we just want everybody to know. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna, again, it's a scary old thing.
But isn't Spartan Final cheaper than Costco on that some stuff?
Yeah, it depends on what it is.
Some stuff and not others.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, it does depend.
Max.
You gotta just know where to shop.
Yeah, okay. So it's good to have both things.
There's all these stuff, do you know?
Oh, go ahead. Next item on the list is Facility Committee. Phil is gonna have an action item of parking lot repair.
Yeah, we're just, uh, just trying to figure out when to do this, we haven't had it authorized and everything. I had a date of seventeen, and you know what, this is a window, it's just a proposed window of two weeks. It would, it's gonna obviously depend on what else may be going on and what the contractor was able to do and whatnot. But I noticed on the, um, on the calendar that that was a time period where there was no concerts. There was no, you know, there was a few things going on we have, but nothing, uh, no special events. And looking at that also, I, I noticed that five twenty-two to six-five was also open, if you will, or there wasn't much there. So, you know, I mean, it really almost doesn't matter. If somebody's got a different suggestion for two, for a two-week window, I would just like to give the contractor and say, okay, we wanna get it done sometime in two weeks.
Okay, cool. What you need to do is get a contractor and say, he's not gonna need two weeks.
Oh, absolutely not.
So.
But you got that window, there's a good idea, the window.
Well, you know, it's good to have a window because of weather and everything else, but you need to get the contractor, you need to tell them what are the solid workdays and then start them.
Well, but, but it gets complicated with the scheduling, because, you know.
Right, and I...
It's quite possible he should wanna do it on the night of, so.
Right, I would suggest the earlier date because once we, um, once we get, you know, we have to get this room done, Steve. We have to get my wood, wood things and, once we get the landscaping in a little bit better shape and we start to developing the marketing materials for the weddings. I mean, July could be a big month for us, it's possible. We don't have enough time to get the word out by May.
And the sooner we, I mean, I don't know if the contractor, any contractors could do that.
No, no, it's a complicated procedure, that's why I put it out so far, because we've gotta, when you get up over the Costco time, you gotta publish in the paper, you gotta make your announcements. Um, we've also, Steve, we gotta, we also have, the contractors all have to, if they don't have formal plans, they gotta have a standardized thing that we're gonna do. If we're gonna lay down, you know, we're gonna break, you know, I, what I wanna do is that the next safety meeting is take a little time with you and we can run down and do a quick list of things we want to have done with the parking lot and thickness of asphalt and what, where we want things, you know. We need to, we need, because we need to give something to them that it's gonna be the same for all of them and they can bid on it.
It's gonna have to be a prevailing wage and all that stuff.
A prevailing wage, the whole kitty mood, yeah, but, so it's gonna take a little while to pull it all together.
And then there's the question of, you want the scope to be not just the parking lot, but the, the basketball court? Or do we wanna consider, uh, broken down?
Two separate prices, probably.
Two separate prices, because it could be a lot of money and we may not wanna do them both.
Yeah, so I think it's March fourteen.
Well, if you're a, I mean, you can do one or the other, I would take the basketball court to be a priority, because that's more of a hazard than the parking lot.
Have we given up on concrete?
No, I don't think so. It's about the same.
But it's extraordinarily expensive.
Yeah.
Well, so, so was asphalt because of the oil prices and everything else. That's come down, but it hasn't really affected the prices of asphalt, we don't know anything about it.
And it doesn't, doesn't affect it pretty much, not at all, really.
So, and it was...
I think we should get prices for both.
If you, if you put the value of the longevity of concrete to the longevity of asphalt and how much more it is, it's worth it to get concrete.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, yeah, we'd certainly consider it, you know.
I think we could look at it, talk to those people and...
I'd, I'd like to, you know, when we have our safety meeting, I'd say, I wanna kinda hook up and, and then we'll talk about it and standardize it, yeah. If, if the committee recommends, you know, concrete, I'd be, well, then we got...
Be better for the skateboard park.
Yeah.
It'd be cooler for the fair.
It would be.
Well, you know, I've been through this, I've been through this asphalt issue, how many times have we done that?
Compaction, but it's never been compacted right and it's, you know.
We've done it a couple of times.
Let me see, laughing about it. For the basketball court, the biggest problem is where the troops lifted up near the close goal. And I mean, you could consider a path instead of redoing the whole thing, which we allot well. We can get a price, so if we have, if we get the price from the contractors and they're broken down separately, then we can say, okay, forget this one and we're gonna go with this instead.
Yeah, we need to...
It's all, right now I think it's all hearsay, we're talking.
I just did blah, blah, blah.
You guys go take...
Good, it's on.
That's fine, I just want everybody, I just want everybody to be aware of this, it's gonna be a big disruption.
No, right.
So, you know, we're, we're gonna...
But that's why it's gotta be coordinated immensely.
So right now it's...
That's right.
Right now you're looking at between Fourth of July and that concert weekend?
I was, I'm looking for, I'm just looking for holes in the, in the schedule.
It's like July eighteen, from two.
As, as possible, possible holes, you know.
Okay.
And, uh...
That's a good time to do it.
You know, so, and it is a little farther out because we're gonna, we gotta do all the stuff we gotta do.
Well, that makes sense, but the other thing is, is that we are gonna start ramping up the wedding stuff.
Right, well, something, see, that's the...
And other bookings.
That's the other thing, something's, something's gonna give there, you know.
Right, we're just gonna have to work it out, that's all.
Right, right.
It always works out, one way or another.
Good, I don't think we got anything done there, so.
Not at all.
No, we didn't get anything done. But I kinda, I guess maybe this is, the whole, the whole thing results in just a kind of war.
I think, next thing we talk about, we gotta have some solid numbers and get real solid stuff.
Already, I get it.
So.
Anyway, it won't be next meeting.
It won't be, we're not sure. Okay, next is Recreation Committee, action item, report on the programs, current activities, instructor fees.
Let me just say, we don't have a report because Cressa just started and she's trying to figure out how all of this works. I've been talking to her, she feels more comfortable with it. So she's not doing the filing yet, I'm just trying to get her to understand the whole facility rental thing and the instructor fees. We have some issues with some of our instructors that she has to deal with.
And also she's...
It's not like she's doing everything right now, but I'm doing the filing and John's the secretary, he's doing the filing.
Okay, so anyways.
And she's not gonna take notes, so I got all that.
She's administrative, administrator for, facilities administrator, and that's gonna probably be her email. The reason that we're not gonna use her name is because if she ever decides, I don't wanna play anymore.
That's a good idea.
We can just plug somebody else in there.
Yeah.
And all the emails will go to her, she'll also be getting contactus@smrpd.org.
Did he make it smrpd admin?
No. It's an ad, because smrpd's already in it.
Okay.
It's in the ad.
Okay.
So it's facilityadmin@smrpd.org.
Okay.
And whoever has that title will have that email.
Okay.
And she's not set up on that yet, as of yet, as far as I know from Alex. But he's got the request in and it should happen as soon as we can get to it.
And starting next month, I'll ask her to provide monthly reports for, um, for us, but I just wasn't gonna ask her, because she's still trying to figure out how to do all this stuff.
Okay, next item. We've had on the docket here, organized ribbon cutting ceremony for the new gazebo. This Sunday I'll be meeting with a band that possibly will probably play for us during the ribbon cutting. But I also will take suggestions of any bands you might recommend. Also, I'm thinking of setting the date back to after we get landscaping done, parking lot done, and basketball court done. And then we'll have a full boat presentation of the brand-new facility, which would include the floor, the, everything that we've done and that we're maintaining right now.
And then we can politicize our programs.
Yeah, and then also, in the realm of committee or recreation, um, I've proposed a letter to help, we're... The SMRPD is gonna become more involved in a presence at the Summer Concert Series. We're gonna be promoting our recreation program, we're gonna be promoting our facility rentals, we're gonna be promoting our school. We're gonna be promoting everything that's under our umbrella. We're gonna be doing that by, um, having a booth, possibly cooking hamburgers, having a booth where we can have people sign up. We're gonna give away lottery, or the raffle tickets to anybody who puts their email down on the list, so we can add that to our email blast. Also, what we need to do is to generate raffles, append a letter, um, I haven't sent out yet, but append a letter to go to businesses and it says, "To whom it may concern, our free monthly Silver Island Summer Concert Series 2016, sponsored by SMRPD, takes place on the third Saturday every month from May to September at the Silver Island Fairgrounds Community Center, is located blah, blah, blah. In order to ensure the success of our tenth anniversary of the concert series, we are seeking contributions to help defray the costs associated with the event, i.e. sound system upgrades, maintenance, et cetera. These contributions, in the way of merchandise, gift certificates, et cetera, will be used to generate interest as prizes in a dollar raffle. Generous donors like you make it possible for Silver Island Summer Concert Series to provide a night of music and entertainment. We hope that we can count on your support. Your donation will be listed and displayed in our Home of the Dollar Raffle booth. Your name or company can also be listed in the event website, Facebook page as well." And then it says WWSMRPD Summer Concert, or the Silver Island Summer Concert Series and Facebook Silver Island Summer Concert Series. "We thank you for your time, consideration, sincerely." And then I have my name and the signature to make it official to help us get solid donations, to get solid participation from people in the raffles. Sometimes when it's a great prize, we've, we've had a prize last all five concerts and we, we have a special raffle for that and then someone can win that. Somebody stole it, though.
Edit that comment out.
That cigar box guitar?
The guitar.
That guitar?
What is your letter asking? Kevin's a western store, you know.
Raffle party.
In the way of merchandise, gift certificates, et cetera. It could be gift cards, it could be, um, it could be a certificate, it could be...
What about money, are we asking for money in that line?
We just say, these contributions, in the way of merchandise, gift certificates, will be used, no one's gonna give money.
They're gonna wanna know if they're tax deductible.
Yes, we can give them that.
You should say that in there in the text.
I wouldn't believe this.
Now, we, I do have an asterisk where it does say, "Our free month," I put an asterisk that says, "We do suggest to bring one can of food for our local food bank, but it is not mandatory."
Do you wanna consider some suggested prizes that we might, we think would be good ones?
Gift cards are always good.
Classic cars, motorcycles, guitars.
A tiny front dollar certificate.
Yeah, everybody loves them. Okay, why don't I, I'm gonna put that on the...
Just consider that.
All donations can be tax deductible.
Yeah, and I would just say that they're free, I wouldn't mention the can of food, it's too much information, I think.
You're dumb enough.
And put all, all donations are tax deductible under I R O, which we already...
Usually you say tax deductible to the extent allowed by law.
Discuss, discuss with you.
Yeah, discuss with you.
That's a good idea.
You'll charge more than the deduct, deduction.
Banners.
Have a big banner for...
Company can buy their own banners.
Yeah, for a thousand bucks, you sponsor their two thousand bucks sponsor.
Then they have to pay a banner fee.
Right.
Well, that's nothing.
No, that's where you get all the money.
That's, that's it, that's what I'm saying, that's what we, you know, you do that at high school and stuff, do that, man.
It sounds like I'll be making banners.
On that fence on the out.
Yeah, you're gonna have them coming down.
Anyways, I'll rewrite this and I'll send it out.
You might wanna say that average attendance at the concert is, you wanna say how many people usually come?
If they wanna pay.
If they wanna pay, just for one concert, they get, they get, you know, sponsor the concert.
Ice cream donated by Good Humor.
People don't even know what SMRPD does in the community. They just say it's a cop, police department, PD.
It's been happening.
And with that said, we're working on our, Zach has been working hard on our, our lineup and we're getting there. And we're sad to say that another, another portrait has been added to our, 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 our pictures, our memorial. I don't know if anyone knows this, but Mama's in the house production, that's Dusty Munch, Mama. And then we have Donnie Keen, it says, "Come early." Gil says, "Free dancin'." Duke says, "No pets, please." And Dave says, "Home of the Dollar Raffle." We just added Shasta, Shasta's passed away.
Oh.
And so now she's on here and she says, "Seventieth, seventieth year." That's ten years to you folks.
That's funny.
We'll say that to you guys later.
So we have, uh, so in May tentative lineup is Freight Shakers and Roadwork. In June we have The Higgs and some to be announced. In July we have Strawberry Moon and Kelly Skater. And August we have Days of Blue and Jason Richards. And September we have Tommy Reeser and Echo Sparks. So, pretty good lineup.
So Strawberry Moon can play the same night as The Higgs?
What time does it start?
We always have it six to ten, but five-thirty's good.
So we need another band to play with.
They were ready to hear.
I, I have a whole market for one more.
If you know one.
Is it?
Somebody to open up for The Higgs, you mean?
Uh, he's probably got somebody, uh...
There's a few bands, um...
They might know somebody that they want to open up for them, we should ask them.
I think maybe somebody.
I'm gonna call everyone this week.
Yeah, maybe they got three, got like three...
But I always, uh...
No, Strawberry Moon.
I always go and...
I stuck with Kelly Skater, 'cause the drummer is manager of Kelly Skater.
I've never heard of Kelly Skater.
Reggae album of the year.
They're a reggae band, Kelly Skater?
Yes, with an A. Scott.
Right.
Scott, you watch them up.
You know who's really good is Lisa Unger's boyfriend's band, but they're up in Berkeley and they only come down here sometimes. They are the dusty green bones.
That's not really helping us, is it, Shane?
Sorry.
Good, let's go.
They might come back.
They were just here the other night.
I know, I know.
I'd love to have them.
I know.
Fundraising committee, Shane.
Did I figure out who's gonna do the hamburger?
Oh, oh, that's right, we're, uh, being more involved, um, I'd like to put a motion that the SMRPD takes over hamburger cooking. Now, we can set it up to where, what I'd like to do is have SMRPD, we don't have a really nice, good barbecue anymore. Ours are just tattered and worn and gone, but it would be nice if we went and bought a nice, you know, not expensive one, just a nice one. And we would be responsible for the burgers and we can have volunteers come in and flip burgers. We could give one night to the children's center, where they would make the profits of flipping burgers. We could give another night for another purpose. But mainly under smrpd, we pick and choose who we would like.
Remember, we're going to need the money.
Yeah, we're going to need the money.
Because we hired Cressa.
Yeah, we have to, we have bills to pay. We have, now we have staff.
You make money on burgers. Not a lot because we don't charge much and we feed the staff and the band.
Yeah, we've got a thing of $5 and we put together a burger, a scoop of beans, a chip. And I think it, yeah, that's it.
Drinks are separate, right?
Yeah. So, with that said, we, we sell roughly about 120 a night. So you figure minimum you might get out of there with, oh, 250 to 300 dollar profit.
Not very much.
For, no, but that's for two hours, three hours work.
We could get a lot more profit if we sold beer. But.
But that's.
That'd be really hard.
Now you're talking though.
Yeah, I'm talking.
You're talking about a different kind of a.
Yeah, then we got to get ABC. There, there are no, speaking of that, there are no like health department issues with us.
All hamburgers?
Well, I mean, we're serving food, we're cooking, we're serving food.
We're already licensed with our kitchen for the senior lunch bunch.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
There you go.
Oh, so.
Well, it'd be good to have a food handler. Do that.
Well, we, we have one, we have one that's, uh, probably would like to help. We have people in line who that.
That want to help.
I mean, Mr. Breakfast doesn't worry, they don't worry about it.
Even if it's for smrpd?
Mm-hmm.
I can get other people to do the burgers, you know, but them hassle.
Yeah, we don't have to do burgers.
Can I suggest you have something healthy on the menu for people that.
We don't have a menu. That makes it expensive. There's no menu.
You can't do a veggie burger?
There's no menu.
No.
Veggie burgers are easy. I would don't eat hamburgers and I don't eat at the concert because there's hamburgers.
The other thing we do, you can come and cook your own food too. People come and do that.
Okay, I have an issue with buying the barbecue because we had like six of them here when we took over. Yeah.
But that's why they're gone.
They weren't that good a shape.
They were all hamburgers.
But they were.
I was bringing mine from home.
But where are we going to put it?
The one that Frank, the one that Frank donated was a very, very nice barbecue, but it simply sat around too long.
It just, they die, you know, of overuse, they rot, they get food rot.
They get rats?
Yeah, they get lots of rats.
They get bees.
Okay, well, it sounds like.
Well, are you proposing to buy one?
I was thinking of it, but it doesn't sound like it. If we've got to do food handling and this and that and the other, let's just do it the way we used to.
How is that?
We just give it to somebody to do. The only reason this is even being talked about is because the guy who did it for the last two years uh, can't do it because his parents went, they're going back to, uh.
The Philippines.
Philippines. So it's the only reason it's a.
It's a good way to talk to people and represent the canyon and.
Yeah, it was just a lot of plus.
It's nothing but good for you guys.
I would continue to work on that if I were you. I would, I would try to keep it in smrpd fundraising. There's just a lot of things to think about.
Cooking burgers.
I did it when, when we started. I did it the first couple of years. I did all the shopping. I did it all and I don't want to do it again, but even I did it. You know, it's not that hard to go to.
But do you think that there's.
We served a nice barbecue meal that cost us a district, a couple thousand dollars to undo the drains.
But do you think there's interest in someone taking on all of that whole aspect of shopping and setting it up and cooking and serving when the money is going to a government agency?
We're hoping it's volunteers. That's what we live off of, volunteers.
I think people want to help.
Once a month.
It's, it's a lot of fun. You're listening to the music, you're out there and.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's like having a booth at the fair. You're part of it.
If you acknowledge.
The ones who guys don't even go know.
The other thing that could happen is that they could be paid out of the money.
They're too hot.
You know, you make.
I don't know, they know we got concerts here.
I wouldn't, I don't think he would agree with that because this is paying someone.
Maybe waiting for is for somebody to show a strong.
Because there, because there's no money changing hands other than the Dollar Raffle at this point.
But if someone's, I mean, we've got people with strong commitments that want to do it, but we have no benefit of it whatsoever. They're just going to do it. They're not going to do it for us. That's, I'm just putting it out there.
No, it's good.
If it becomes a problem, I don't want to do it.
You know, see Kevin, the, the, what about the ice cream?
We can do that. That's no problem.
He's your ice cream man.
We should have Cressa do that. She can pay, she can earn enough money to pay.
I've already talked to Cressa about it.
You get to know everybody.
Yeah.
She's a realtor.
Wait, wait, we don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mary doesn't fit. Go for it. Go for it. Do it, do it, do it.
I've already got a volunteer.
Will they do all the wrapping?
We're going to be, we're going to be doing the, uh.
I don't, I do.
We're going to be. We're already going to be taking over, um, ice cream sundaes. And that's where we're going to be giving raffle prizes.
Oh, good.
Uh, raffle tickets for prizes for emails. And we're going to be talking about our programs and our flyers for, uh, zumbas and every other program we got going. And, um, so the smrpd, I just was thinking, there's no better way to communicate with the, our community when three to 400 people are sitting right in your front doorstep. Um, and if you don't do that, there's no other better way to get ahold of them.
Hey, what percentage of people that come to the, and you're right Zach, I haven't been, you know, to, but how many, what's the percentage of people that come from downtown?
All the cool people.
All the cool people are up here.
You haven't been there, huh?
More and more. There's more and more coming from down below.
There's some.
More and more people.
We get lots of people from downtown.
You think it's half the people from?
No.
No, not that much.
Still most of the canyon.
But whole families go.
The world will get out. I know it will.
Friends come from, friends, friends that come from, you know, people around here.
And it depends on the band we have playing. The bands have the groupies come up.
And the bands, because bands have their own fans. Yeah.
Yeah, we got good bands with friends.
Yeah.
There's a lot of flat hundreds that come all the way.
Well, the amount of people with the social media and everything else. That, I just wanted to throw it out there because I, I think it's a great idea, but I don't care. I mean, I, I've had a million ideas in my life. You can have, you can have that one.
Well, it is our most, I don't, I'm not, there's just a lot of questions. I'm not opposed to it.
Throw any static.
It's just questions. Why don't you just pick out a barbecue and make a request?
We could do it, but you, you want propane, right?
Yeah, well, the other thing, Danny Brown supplies the propane for free. He comes and fills up our tanks.
Steve, where would we put it?
Behind the building over there with the other one.
Are the games gone?
No.
What do you mean they're not gone?
Oh, they are.
They better be gone.
Are they gone? I don't know.
They better be gone.
We were going to, got to hack them up. It's kind of the job to hack them up. Oh, there, you got rid of them already?
I didn't do anything. They just disappeared.
Oh, Shay, did, did that hit?
No, I don't think so.
The aliens got them.
But anyway, so there's space back there for a barbecue and if you buy a barbecue, buy a cover, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think it's a good idea if you guys do that. That way it, it'll all be yours a hundred percent pretty much.
Pretty much.
Yeah. I like it better than just someone setting up and making money there.
So, we're going to make a motion to secure a barbecue and spend.
Buy a new barbecue.
Buy a new one.
Yes.
Yeah.
It can't be used.
You buy a new one. Also, it should have.
And a cover.
And a cover, and it should have a burner or two next to it because we've got to cook the beans.
And tiny barbed wire around the bottom to keep the rats out.
And.
Yeah, the last one, I put the cage stuff on the back of it for, remember?
Yeah. But we get the one with the burner and that way.
Hardware cloth.
We don't need to bring a hot plate. We can just put the beans in the pot.
Put the beans on there and then you got.
Open up that big can of tilapia.
A big griddle on there to flip.
Now, the only bummer is this year, I hope people weren't spoiled by last year because Eric's mom and dad made the beans from scratch.
I didn't think they were that good.
Oh, they were excellent.
Really?
They were good beans, but they didn't, they didn't, they didn't soak them in water first.
Oh.
Fart like a gorilla in the morning.
There was something wrong with them. Maybe that was it.
They'd fart like crazy.
I used to just buy the bush, the cans of bush and.
Yeah, that's all we're going to be doing.
They're good.
That's all we're doing. Bushes or.
All right, I knew that.
Get the big, you know, the giant cans.
Yeah, I tried.
He knew. He's waiting for a second.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Okay, which runs us right into fundraising committee. I think Shay is the head of fundraising. She should make the menu.
What menu? There will be, there will be grass fed burgers and veggie burgers on the menu.
Well, you can't hit your target at $5.
No, you can't.
You're not on that.
On the veggie burger, you, because you're not.
You're not on that committee. Veggie burgers are always.
Okay, we're moving on to fundraising.
We are.
Thank you.
Shay, you're asked to approve funds for advertising in orangecounty.net for event hosting. And what's that number you're asking for?
220. He said he would honor the good guy deal that he offered last year for nonprofit plus like a discount.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
This is 220 per year. And we can promote anything we want.
Can we put on our wedding site? Five, five categories.
Okay, so we could promote the children's center.
That would be a category. Yeah.
Oh, so this is for all kinds of things?
Yes, it's a great deal.
It's a great deal.
And the children's there and the concert series.
Facility rental, we could do meetings, sites. We could do all of that. And then plus event promoting underneath that, the chili cookoff, the, you know, country fair.
Are you going to be a.
Yeah, we did those for free.
Are you going to be the go-to contact for orangecounty.net?
That would be fine.
Okay. I make a motion to. What? Oh, you don't have a spreadsheet on it?
No. I mean, this is serious stuff. This isn't something you can just throw out there. I mean, to craft what we have to craft for this, we need certain kind of words, certain kind of pictures. And everything has to be consistent, you know, so we have to do.
I've already asked the questions I wanted, but I didn't get answers.
No, I didn't get answers to that.
I don't, I mean, if you consider what, you know, I, I really want to know how many people they contact. How many people they get hits? How many people a month? Is it, what category is their hottest? Um, all these.
Yeah, you have to do some research to figure out how to use this site and what to use it for. So we can go ahead and approve this, but I don't want you to go out and buy it tomorrow.
Don't buy it tomorrow.
Let's spend the time figuring out what to do.
Get everything, get the verbiage that we want for all these things. Get the pictures organized and then go boom.
Right.
Everything on there is very professional, though. The language is professional and the photos are extraordinarily appealing.
What was really nice is, um, our annual events, they're keeping on their site. I paid 25 bucks for the country fair.
That's something else. We don't need to talk about that. We do have a photographer that's willing to give her time. As Cressa is a photographer. She does her own photography, so she can help.
Did you ever get the wedding pictures?
I have them.
Can you get them to him?
The ones that are now.
I have to tell you, I just, I can't ask for, I don't ask Shay for anything anymore. It's just, it's like this frickin' blonde vacuum. Nothing happens.
Yeah, I went through the stuff that you said.
You have a lawyer next to you. Well, she knows, she knows that deal. I just like, what?
I don't get all those emails that you say you send.
And all of the stuff.
That's still running.
Okay, all right, anyway, let's just move on.
Well, Kevin was in the process of making a motion to approve this, but I don't think he actually got it done.
Yeah, well, we can either make a motion to approve it with, with more information and more solid plan.
I think we should just approve it and then we can figure out what to do.
But not do it till we're ready.
Right.
All right. Now, does it start?
Just to get it off the tape.
Does it start the year, the year starts the day we give them the 220?
I would imagine, but that would be a question.
Let's see, let's see if we can get any of these questions answered from the guy. But also, let's make a motion to allot $220 for orangecounty.net for up to five different categories to promote. From the children's center to our concerts to our rental wedding facilities.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. All right, here's the best part of the meeting, public comments.
Wait.
What?
What about other fundraising?
Oh.
Was that on there?
No, you didn't, you didn't remember? No, it wasn't, but you're, you can add whatever you want.
Emails about that.
You didn't send me anything about what was going to be on the agenda. But I do know you need to talk about chili cookoffs.
Yes, I wanted to get an, I wanted to get approval for the Canyonland Conservation Fund to have a beer booth and donate all 100% proceeds to the children's center.
For what?
For the beer. At the, at the chili cookoff.
Oh, at the chili cookoff?
At the chili cookoff.
The chili cookoff, under what I understand about the chili cookoff is everything is for the children's center. There's no.
No, we're going to change it.
But, everything would go.
No, we've never had it here at our park, so we've never had an ABC license for the chili cookoff at our park that needs to be approved by the board. And we need a nonprofit to do it.
Right.
And the inter canyon league, it, it was really hard to get the inter canyon league in with the country fair. And they were to keep part of that proceed and donate part of it. Or keep it all. It was up to them and it was hard to do.
And we didn't get any money.
And that was with a sponsor of beer. And I don't have that sponsor for free beer right now, so. I thought it would be better to go with a local organization that's going to for sure donate it all. Doesn't have a problem with that, number one. Number two, we already have insurance. Inter canyon league had to buy a separate insurance policy. We're already insured. So, that's why I was thinking it would be a lot easier for me to do. Because I already do it anyway. I do the ABC license.
I think as much money that can be generated for the children's center is the best thing to do. Because the chili cookoff has always been for the children's. I think as much money that can be generated for the children's center is the best thing to do, because the Chili Cook Off has always been for the children's.
Right, but if they, if they get the beer, they're gonna get the lion's share of the money, but we can get the rest of the money, and we're going to need the money.
Is the Chili Cook Off really happening?
We're only gonna, we're only gonna need to pay the, the twenty-five, the twenty-five dollars, I think, I only wanna do beer, not beer and wine. Twenty-five dollars for the nonprofit uh ABC license, and then we wouldn't, we already have an annual policy that covers this, so there wouldn't be any payment to Canyonland for the, for the insurance. Um, if I don't get a beer sponsor, then there would be a beer uh price coming out of that. Cups, beer, wristbands, that's it. I have wristbands, so I don't really see that even being a problem.
You got wristbands, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but uh, but you're not, you're proposing to do the beer booths, but not the whole Chili Cook Off, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm in charge of running the whole Chili Cook Off, but Canyonland would, would be the nonprofit to sponsor the beer booth.
You are. I got you.
We did, the children's center can't have a non, have, can't get a beer license, neither can SMRPD.
Okay, good. Okay, that's clear. Okay, that's clear.
Get it, yeah.
Now, we're talking to Debbie about the SMRPD being a benefactor. You would like the SMRPD to be a benefactor of the Chili Cook Off also?
Can't have a chance.
They would be good. Yeah.
Okay. It makes sense, because we have all these public events and the SMRPD just keeps putting out money, putting out money, and we get nothing.
We don't get anything.
Well, do you want that proposed to the Canyonland for, for beer proceeds or just from chili tickets? Or does it matter?
Well, it seems like last year we had this issue and we just reserved the question of how to allocate the proceeds until after we had the Chili Cook Off.
I saw them.
There was certain funding that SMRPD gave to make it happen, and then last year when we got the accounting, we decided what to do with it, and it did go to the children's center, but we reserved that issue, and um we do have other things we do, like the lunch bunch. And we have uh Cressa and we have a deficit, et cetera, so.
Cressa.
Yeah, Steve Rager, he's draining his.
We don't, we, we don't have to, I don't think we have to guarantee in advance that everything that we raise from the event we sponsor.
Not, not now, since we're not doing it at Irvine, at Irvine Lake, 'cause Irvine Lake wouldn't, wouldn't give us a place, right, unless we were, it was for the children's center.
Right.
No, that, no, that's not true.
That's not true, okay.
But for here, we don't need to decide that issue.
There is an issue that should be decided then right now. There is an ethical issue, because the Canyonland Conservation Fund is Shay's nonprofit, and there is an ethical issue about a board member using the board to, to get money for their nonprofit, and that's going to trial. So I think if we stipulate.
But she's not proposing that they get any money.
Right, so I think that we should decide that all the money would go to the children's center from the Beer Garden.
Yeah.
I like that, cause it's clean.
That's what Shay's proposing.
You don't have to, you don't have to stipulate that it goes to the children's center, that's just part of SMRPD. You can just stipulate that it's all gonna go to SMRP, the umbrella of SMRPD.
Okay, that's fine.
But I have a more fundamental issue, which is this isn't on the agenda. You are talking about an action item, you are talking about a director's uh own nonprofit, and I think it has to be a noticed item.
Yeah, it should be. Put it on next month, yeah, table.
Can you wait until next month?
Yeah, I can't do the license until thirty days before the event. That's the cutoff.
Okay, so put it on the next.
I just would like to know if that's the direction I'm gonna go.
Whatever you, whatever you want should be on the next agenda, whatever you need approved, because you'll be getting close.
Shay, you need to write down what you want on the agenda for that.
I will. I will.
Anything Chili Cook Off.
She did send an email about that, but I just.
Then I took off to Northern California and I put John's wrong name on his airplane ticket to Canyon.
Oh, gosh.
Do you have anything else?
That's not good, not my long.
fundraising are you gonna talk about?
Somebody else's name up for my ticket.
No, that was it. Those were the two things that I needed.
So Shay, when are, when do we have like the first Chili Cook Off meeting and I'd like to.
We have a date.
Soon now.
Okay.
May seventh.
Our newsletter's coming out next week.
The record show, May seventh is going to be the Chili Cook Off.
I don't wanna, like, I don't wanna run into the parking lot.
Okay, so probably in March, we'll have the cheer meetings. Yeah, that's what we did last time.
May seventh is that the day?
Okay, yeah, I couldn't remember when you.
Yes, May seventh.
Yeah, we'll do it in March. Okay.
Right, that's something we can, we did agree on, May seventh is the Chili Cook Off day. And we sort of do a Cinco de Mayo Chili Cook Off.
This will be the first one on a Saturday, 'cause Irvine Lake always gave us a Sunday only.
Right. I think it's gonna be more successful on a Saturday.
It'll be nice in some ways, and another way is that it, then it doesn't conflict with.
Now, one thing you have to, you have to find out if you're gonna have, you gotta maybe change the rules that you don't have to cook it on site.
No, that's the judge's choice. Chili has to be cooked on site. Those are, that's a chili rule. The people's choice does not. That's how, that's how it's been. Everybody's happy with that.
Alright, and then we'll need to get with facility.
I'm a judge, I'm not happy with it.
Why?
Yeah.
He wants all of it cooked on site.
I, I'd rather they cook it at home, it's better that way. Chili's not good.
Yeah.
They only got a short time to prepare it there. At the lake, at home, they cook it all night, but it's.
When we, when in your planning committee, you need to have Steve there or Phil, and they need to find out what you need at each booth.
For real.
Go for it.
As.
I'm a judge, it's not good.
Whatever's gonna be there.
Yeah, it's gonna be complicated.
I'm gonna follow the same thing we did over at the lake and see if it's gonna power.
I was gonna bring that up, but I think that was a time.
But you have to explain it all to them.
Cause we might have to bring in a generator and see if we can get one donated, blah blah.
The SEO's got a generator.
Oh, you know what? Our power.
We are a little spike. We only allow the bounce house.
No, no, oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about a big old diesel generator that we can maybe borrow from Mike.
Did you call them back?
We only allow the bounce house and the um sound to have power at the Chili Cook Off.
Be cool, X, some bad.
Never got a hold of it.
We haven't let any chili booths or any vendor have any power. They had to have a generator or whatever. We'll just keep it that way. Chili booths don't need power.
Okay.
Nobody gets power except for.
Propane, propane power is all you need.
Just let the facilities.
That shouldn't spike.
The facilities committee know anything you need or what you're gonna be doing here.
Not using the inside of the buildings.
Power for the bands.
Yeah.
What's a.
And we had a solar, when we had a solar panel for the stage last year, finally.
Let's not talk about what we've done. It's waste of time.
But we can't here, because there's no space for.
We don't need it.
I don't, I don't have an answer for the spiking.
Did you call, did you?
This event's not gonna spike it.
I'm not, I'm not, you can try it again.
Kevin's gonna call. The fair didn't even spike it.
Buy you a bottle, brother.
They're very hard to get a hold of, but I think I can maybe go around. I haven't had time to do it, but you've gotta, you've gotta find direct lines from people through other assets through internet, and you find somebody and you talk to them and, and it's a whole wheeling deal.
I will buy you a bottle of whiskey if you can get that thing here.
I should have one just to start.
It's going on these years.
I want a start.
You wanna specify whiskey?
Yeah, yeah, like a Crown Royal, Crown Royal, that's okay. I thought he was gonna, you know, do a.
Handle?
A handle, you know, a bottle.
I thought I was gonna do a fifty, fifty-year Glen Fitch or something.
I have one other question. Can I have one on a flyer for the Chili Cook Off? That can go in this country.
Oh, I have to do all of that stuff, believe me.
So where's this at? I thought it was.
Yeah.
No early advertising, we're not gonna waste money on advertising this year. Spent too much money last year.
Flyer. Do you guys have flyers?
You do now. Do you have someone that you're gonna train to do this in the future? The thing about, well, that's kind of up to this board.
Well, no, it's not, it's not too good.
Cause it's, it's under the SMRPD.
Oh, well, it would really be under.
You need to ask them.
Is Wendy your assistant on this one?
No.
She's not doing it.
No, Wendy's gone. The volunteers are a little thinner, so we need new ones.
Yeah, okay.
When's Wendy leaving?
Where's she going?
Oh, I don't know, but she's just, she's just not volunteering herself for events.
Okay, let me just suggest, when you get your committee together, see who might wanna, if you're leaving the canyon, you need to you know, get somebody who's willing to take over the event and put it together. And it's not rocket science, but it's not easy either, but it's just something that takes time. And I think with the amount of right people in place, if they wanna commit for a two-year program, then we just have to find those two-year people over and over, and it can, it can survive and be seamless with all procedures and policy in place. And we do this, this, this type of thing. But you really have to pay attention and let somebody, new people know what goes on and when it has to go on.
That's, we started a couple of years ago creating a book.
It's gonna be like a seminar.
And everything's in it.
And Melody and I'd like to be in on the start, so we can coordinate a little better on the money handling. It, it went fine last year, but it was very complex, and we would like to be able to try and simplify it.
Right.
Like, instead of buying a ticket and then using the ticket and like that, just use dollar bills or something.
Let's have a money meeting.
Yeah, we'll have a money meeting where just get us, let us know, we'll get involved with that, simplify things.
That would be good, okay.
Okay, no, public comments? I have public comments. We have some Silverado Summer Concert sticker. Um, these are, the bottom left is the second place from last year. Then I have my aliens in there.
Oh, the aliens are back, oh.
What are the aliens?
I started that, oh, I started Kelly's and Amy's.
Who's this?
If we get. It was supposed to, no, you never have.
I know, I know, 'cause I got over it real fast.
It never happens. But I've never left it alone.
I like the one with the gear, uh.
I like that.
The bicycle and gears thing.
I can see through this paper and I've already picked that one.
Yeah, that's, that's the winner.
That is so cool.
That, that's edgy.
Silverado Roswell.
So, that's only public comment. Any board comments?
Yes, I have one. Oh, you've probably seen it out on the marquee. We're showing The Martian Thursday at twelve forty-five.
Good movie.
Yeah, so spread the word, and even if people don't come for the lunch bunch uh luncheon, uh after that, we are gonna have a showing of Oscar-nominated movie, The Martian.
That's in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
How'd you get that?
Oh, special order.
Kevin did it.
Kevin did it, of course.
What is it, a DVD?[1586.87]